Okay.
It's all at seven o'clock. So start. Immediately, Belcher Town. Welcome to the September ninth, twenty twenty five, meeting of Europe twenty twenty. What did I say?
Three, five.
Twenty five, twenty five, twenty twenty five. Meeting of Europe planning board. Tonight, we have a limited agenda. We have one A and R, which is a minor subdivision approval for Mr. Voice on that one oh five, lot three, Old Bay Road. We've got a right of first refusal to look at for a parcel, a very small parcel, on Rural Street. From Gary and Roxanne Layden. And then we've got, once again, before us, that property of one twenty two Federal Street. That we had discussed once before, set for site plan review. The attorney that's representing the people that are going for the site plan review would like us to review of the conditions we've based on the site plan. Once again, because they don't agree with the determination that we made. We've got additions with consent of members for any thing that we want to discuss that's a non-voting matter in our meeting. Not voting matter. The minutes from your last meeting, bills. Let me see, little bills. Town plan report and members' report. And with that, we'll get right into the Thursday A and R. We have a guest here tonight, Mr. Voice.
Correct.
He's, uh, I'm gonna ask Elizabeth if he could tell you a deal on this one, please.
Sure. I came and chatted with Doug for a little bit this afternoon. He missed me very strange. Doug, do you want to give a one thing? Walk us through this?
What's that you were going?
Oh, no, no, I think I can. So what we've got is, um, the applicant, uh, who's here with us.
Yeah.
Gordon Voice, twelve Old Bay Road. Um, and we are looking at, um, map one oh five dash three. Which is back here, it's at the end of a common drive, um, with sixty plus a bit, foot of frontage. And this, this parcel is currently at forty-eight acres, I think.
Forty-eight acres is the original parcel that I bought back in nineteen eighty-five.
And you're proposing creating, um, a lot with the house, existing house and barn. And then thirteen point six acres.
Correct.
And then leaving remaining land of thirty-four point four plus or minus acres. And it says on the, the plan that it is not to be considered a second building lot. Is that something that we always see on, on the remaining land?
Yeah.
I, I didn't remember seeing it.
We'll, we'll see it when it's in fact not compliant. If the remaining land has frontage, then we won't see it.
Okay. Um, so we've got all of, all of the required things on the plan here. We have, um, owner identified with address and signature and date on the application. No signature or date on the Mylar, but that's often the case. We have a surveyor identified on the application, Harold Eaton and Associates. An engineer stamp from Randall Is- Isner, if that's how you say it, here. Um, oh. The PDF that I was looking at did not have the signature and I was gonna note that, but now it's there. Okay, so that's all good. Um, we have, a butters in the region of what is gonna be lot one are all identified. We have the locusts, we have the, the, um, northero. What else do we? I, I think that's it. So have, have you all had a chance to look at it?
Yep.
Any, any questions from anybody? Or anything that our applicant would like to add?
Uh, no, it's, uh, the, the house is a house that I built back in two thousand and four. And my wife and I have decided it's too big and we're ready to move on, so. Been a resident of Belcher Town since nineteen seventy-nine and love it here, but moving closer to daughter and family.
There's one of that going on. So Len, anything you'd do on this?
Well, it's pretty straightforward, it's that.
You want? The chair?
Uh, the only thing that I always look at is to make sure that the new property line doesn't create a situation of a non-conformity to the existing buildings. In this case, a forty-foot setback or more than clear, so, um, completely happy.
Okay. Well, I think this is where I say, that being the case.
Yep, yes, no.
I did.
Oh, okay.
You said, you said no. That being the case, I move to endorse the A and R for Gordon Voice at twelve Old Bay Road. Map one oh five dash three, lot one, and remaining land. I've shown him the plan dated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. The application is dated a few days earlier, but that's not, I mean, should we go ahead a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
So, we have, we all have to sign?
Yeah, you're gonna sign the Mylar and then he's gonna take it because he needs to record it and then.
The closing is Friday, so I need to take it to the registry and get it recorded tomorrow. So I appreciate it.
Love you.
Thank you.
Can't believe you're gonna be.
Pardon?
Can't believe you're leaving Belcher Town after all.
It's hard to believe, it is. Um, and it's not an easy thing to, I love living here and, uh.
Where's your daughter located?
She's in Hangam, Mass.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah. It's a two-hour drive if the, if there's no traffic and three or four hours if there is.
Yeah. Well, and thank you for taking such beautiful care of a really nice property.
Thank you, yes.
Want to sign this, please?
One more, man.
Here, let me do it so I don't smear the ink.
Is this all I need for?
Yeah, just go, take that over to the registry in your wallet and you'll be in good shape.
Make your wallet.
Yeah. Yeah, they care about that.
It's easier to roll it around the table.
Yeah, if you need to.
Think I can get it. So, thank you all. And, uh, thank you, Doug, for your guidance.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your patience. If you enjoy, enjoy your work as you go.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Yep, looking forward.
My sister remembers the time she met you on a flight.
Was that right?
Yeah, coming back from, I don't know, someplace southwest.
Yeah.
I bet this guy knows you.
I wonder how that conversation started.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
You'll have to introduce me to your sister. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next one we have is a right of first refusal. And this is a property we've already seen before because we had it for the A and R. Let's split the piece off a little here. Is that six weeks ago that we did this one?
Who was in office early on?
Yeah, or maybe, yeah, it was in Belcher Town.
That's, that's the one where the foundation was not quite properly placed for setback?
Wasn't far enough. The setback, so they had to take a little, um, bite at the property next door. And I guess it was the property next door in chapter status.
Yeah.
So it's point zero three, four, eight acres, which obviously is of no conservation value. Property doesn't have any other significant attributes that might be of interest to the people of the town of Belcher Town, so. Does anybody have, I mean, everybody's already seen the map and the information from their attorney making a request for the, the draw was circulated here previously, uh, when we notes. Does anybody have any other need for information or discussion on this particular parcel? I think it's pretty much a open show. It's hooked on from sixty to. Well, he, he's, the only thing that I found a little confusing is he cited sixty-one A and sixty-one B. How could that little parcel be in more than one classification section?
The bigger parcel, I think it was in, in one of them and then, yeah, it was in A and then the upstairs office, Andrea, who mentioned that it had been converted into sixty-one B.
All right, so he just threw them both in there to make sure he covered all the spaces.
Yeah.
All right. And, uh, that was from a mature nature here in town. Uh, I'll make a motion then, unless discussion is, is, should be considered. You're, you would've chimed in on this one. I'll make a motion that we make a recommendation to the select board that they not exercise the town's right of first refusal on this parcel as not being of significant value for conservation or any other purpose for the town of Belcher Town. So, I'll, I'll, it would be horn seconded, motion made, seconding for discussion on motion. During that, I'll move to a vote all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So Doug, you can send that, apparently send that recommendation letter to the, to the select board. And then, um, the only other active thing we have to discuss is that property, it went through the Federal Street and.
Well, I'll, I'll butt in.
Yeah, you wanna, um, set out the reason why Attorney Positary is, um, is asking us to take another look at this?
I mean, he's, he's asking us, he's letting us know that he's going to the Conservation Commission. And if they're successful in changing their opinion, they would like an amended site plan approval. So, uh, right now, you don't have to do anything. Last night, Conservation, uh, met with him and discussed it. And their conclusion was they want to see the standard operating plan. They also discussed the broken curb. The lawyer was on the call. No decision has been made yet. And, uh, so if the applicant repairs the curb that's over by the swamp and, um, has a satisfactory standard operating plan, which is for cleaning up, um, fuel spills, then they might change their minds and permit it. If so, then you would come back. So it's not concluded, that we don't know.
It would only come to us if, in fact, ConsCom approved a change in the conditions.
Yeah. Yeah, because if they don't, then you might not be able to do it.
Well, there was, there was opposition to, we're talking about having it, uh, on the swamp side or on the other side. Um, there was opposition on this board to having it on the swamp side. And people here spoke that they wanted it on the, was that the west of the north? I can't remember.
The northwest of the swamp.
On the right hand side of the property.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of, uh, I remember three or more people speaking against it, which we weren't just taking the recommendation of Conservation Commission. We also had voices on the board that didn't want to have it over there. Is, is, if that's still the case, um, and what if the Conservation Commission now comes in and says, okay, well, let it be moved, but the, the board still is against it?
Well, then that's true.
We're putting them through a process that's not really going anywhere. Should we be, um, discussing it again now? Are we flexible enough to allow it to be moved to the other side if the Conservation Commission goes along with it? Or are we, are we still set against it?
Well, I, I, I take objection to the dead set. You know, three out of the five voice opposition, that implies that two out of the five didn't. And I meant to go back and review the, our original, um, video on, on that. But I would be open to, certainly to, um, having it on the swamp side for the safety reasons of, of the, where the gas is currently stored, as well as, as well as the argument that if it's not acceptable for the cars that have been cleaned and prepped and repaired and are ready for sale, then it wouldn't be acceptable for any vehicle of any kind to be parked over there. And that's certainly not a current limitation.
Um, yeah, you know, safety's a problem. There shouldn't be any cars parked there. It should be part of the parking scheme and law.
I don't know if this, if it falls technically into a, um, making a non-conforming situation more non-conforming. But it seems like every extra car you add adds to the risk of having material get into the water that should not be there. I mean, I, I'm sort of guessing that this, that under today's standards, there wouldn't be a gas station there, period. So when I say technically, it probably doesn't fall in non-conforming. But effectively, I think it does. And it seems to me that, you know, they have a permit for doing what they're doing and, and it's really not an appropriate site. And it makes it has to feel pretty strong a little bit.
Wish they'd be doing any more cars at all.
Yeah, yeah, well, and if they can't manage to, to move cars around for when their fuel deliveries come, then it's really not a very good site for a used car lot. That's, that's my opinion.
I can, I'm trying to jog, like, was it five cars?
It's a five or six. It's maybe, um.
Four, six, those five.
Yeah, they asked for up to five. They might not, you know, maybe their license, you know, flat board says, no, we're, yeah, maybe, we'll only give you two based on this recommendation or something.
I think if it comes up again, then you just stick with our, with our new market plan.
So, so on the agenda today, is it the discussion of would we be open to reconsidering if the ConsCom changes?
I think that's.
Or is it an actual decision?
I, I don't think you need to make a decision, but well, that, well, that decision would be, are you open to reconsidering or not?
If, if the ConsCom changes, I would be open to reconsideration.
I guess I would not.
You'd be open to reconsidering?
I'd be open to, I'd be open to reconsider.
I heard about, um, I'm probably not.
Probably not.
Probably not. ConsCom would have to say something really, just that blew my mind, why they, why they would say it's okay to put it there. I, I, I just don't see that. I'd like to speculate, but I don't see that happening. I just, I don't.
It's very, you know, me, isn't it? I, I guess I'd be open to reconsidering. So, a majority would be open to re, to, it's based on further information that they might supply as they make their presentation to the Conservation Commission, so.
Although what Sarah described is that they've already let something that shouldn't happen, happen and haven't corrected it until she pointed it out to them.
Yeah, the broken curb, yeah.
It, I mean, I, I do have some concerns that it, that the lot is just not picking up the space. They're trying to cram more activity, a few more bucks out of that, that parcel, and it just is not big enough. It doesn't have enough room.
Yeah, I mean, you can.
They, they were trying to do that when they're gonna have wine and beer there.
Oh, yeah, and they couldn't do it.
It just, couldn't make it fit.
Well, I guess truthfully, wine and beer would probably be in, in more traffic than the occasional used car, but, but still.
I mean, there's just gonna be parked cars. You'll get like one customer a week or something.
All right, well, the door's not shut here, uh, as, as far as reconsidering our, our initial decision.
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean you're saying.
Doesn't mean we're gonna change it.
Yeah, I think they are.
But if they want to supply additional information, you can tell them that, uh, we're, we're still, we've got, uh, in mind and will listen to whatever they have to say and go from there. All right, so. Are you gonna let them?
Well, no, because he wasn't even asking me. He was just letting, advising us.
Letting you know, letting you know that it was going to be Concom.
Yeah.
All right. And what is this one? Oh, that's the site plan for, for twenty-four. I think I might just have over there. The two folders. And that's all the business we're talking for us tonight. I'm gonna go right to the minutes. And, uh, the minutes were previously circulated. People have had a chance to stay them and make any additions or changes or edits that they wanted to make. However, um, we've got them before us again tonight. Does anybody have any else, that they, anything else that they want to change?
Yeah.
Right, we're getting on the motion and we prove the minutes of August twelve, twenty twenty-five as you. Second.
One second.
That's, it's gonna second it. Motion made and seconding for the discussion on the motion. During that, I'll move to a vote all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody have any, uh, additional discussion items?
I have one, um, and maybe I'm looking for advice from the board on how to respond. But I was approached by Mark and Mandy Timms of Oasis Drive at a recent kids' football game. And they live across from Mr. Barry's property. And she had lots of questions regarding where we stood with regards to that property. And I said, there will be minutes coming out that will basically represent our position. I didn't really talk about the decisions at this point. I wanted to focus her back on the minutes. And she said she's fine with that. She was looking for them. I said, well, that last meeting was canceled, so we have to approve them now. She did raise an issue. And the issue, in her mind, is that there is a trailer on the property and a generator running, um, most of the day and night. And she's asked who should she be in contact with? And I did, I didn't give her any direction. I said, I'll, I'll give you feedback on it. She's tried to go to our website and for whatever reason, I confused. I think she sent an email to Paul.
That would be correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just told her I would get back to her with some direction as to where that raised her concerns.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
You're the zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah.
We just do the zoning and enforcement.
Yeah.
We're the only enforcement officers. We don't do any enforcement, to be honest.
And she can find that contact on our website.
Yeah. Billy Inspector or Inspection and.
So that, that is Paul.
Yeah.
Okay, so Paul was the correct person to go.
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Right, and he's also the person who denied the building.
So she's already reached out to him via email?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Good.
So I'll tell her she got the right person and can anticipate some kind of feedback.
Yeah.
I watched the, the, um, ZBA session about that, which got continued, but maybe you were there.
That was in fact, yeah.
Um, but there was someone from the Homeowners Association present who spoke at the end, who, who said that she was there representing the Homeowners Association and that they emphatically did not want the road, their, their property to.
Yeah, that, that's their, right. I know. They own that piece.
They own that road, yeah.
So whatever they decide to do with it, yeah. Okay.
They could build a wall if they want.
They, they don't own that road. There is no road.
That's, that's like a property. Yes, that is.
They own the property.
Yeah.
We, we clear.
I'm usually the stickler about that, so.
But that's a good clarification.
This is, this is the property that, um, the frontage was a luxury?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That was kind of shocking, needing to listen to.
Um, well, it got a, a little, I thought it got a little bit off the mark by talking about things that weren't pertinent, but, what happened was, uh, Mr. Barry was there acting under a, a Harvard's attorney from his son. His son wasn't present. So the actual owner and the person that was doing this wasn't there. And, um, he, he presented all the documents going back to the original Superior Court litigation that took place before that, in the land court decisions back in the nineteen seventies and at the time when, uh, Montcell was, the paper road didn't exist. And, uh, just, I think, confused the matter by not bringing it up to date and talking about what's happened in the last fifteen years. And we just ignored it completely. Now, we had sent that information and Doug had it. And, uh, so it was in the record and read into the record by the, the chair there, Jennifer Sharro. And, uh, when she asked him about the appeals court case that basically stood for the premise that it wasn't a road, he, he said, well, I wasn't a party that, I don't know what you're talking about. I've never heard of this before in my life. He just disavowed any knowledge of, um, of what went on in the Superior Court case or the appeal of that Superior Court case.
And his name is.
Happened with the planning.
All of those documents. He's listed as one of the.
He was listed right on, on the, yeah, as a party. And he said, no, I'm not. I don't know what you're talking about. So, uh, Jennifer was sort of caught, you know, without being able to really, uh, talk about that material. So she decided that she would hunt. And said, well, Mr. Barry, these documents do pertain to your property and to the title to this property. And if you're asking us to override, uh, an appeals court case, we can't do that. So you need to go back and, and look at these things and really update, flesh out your argument here if you're going to be asking us to declare that there's frontage for this lot because you ignore some of the, you know, the, the documents that are pertinent to this case and so. And she continued it to, uh, the third week of October. So, and it's gonna be a while.
The, the very judicious and wise approach for her to take, well, saying, I'm not gonna run a rough shot at me. If you, you know, if you do, to look and review the documents that I have in front of me that are clearly here in Blackaway and then we can be.
She said she couldn't ask him questions.
Yeah, she did, she did a great job.
She said, you're unprepared. You're not ready to, to really argue, well, the points here, I can't, you know, really adjudicate this thing without you being prepared or having your son here and having him prepare. You know, uh, this is just, this is not gonna work. So she continued it. I guess they couldn't be in, in. I guess they couldn't be in, in September, so they continued it until October.
Is that for typically only three people?
In town.
It is usually only three.
And she said she was gonna be away and therefore there wouldn't be a forums in town.
Well, I think they're looking for a member too, aren't they?
Probably.
I've been sending, only looking for a member and looking for a couple of associate members. And it's, you know, stand-ins in case they don't have a, a forum. So anybody out there that wants to be on the zoning board of appeals, I don't know how much fun that must sound like. Um, there's some openings that are available right now, and I'm sure they would love to hear from you. Actually, that, that's, uh, I was gonna bring that up as, uh, an addition to discuss was the, the results of that, um, that ZBA hearing. Since we participated in it by making a recommendation and supplying material, so just to let everybody know what happened to it. And that's that. So, uh, we've got no bills. We'll go right to the complaint and report. Mr. Doug, what have you got for us?
Some good news. This is the Pepper Ridge subdivision. Um, it is just within, within less than an inch, millimeters, being close. Uh, and we, we were out there last, I don't know, whatever day it was, um, with the engineer and the owner, and checked it all out. Just a couple of minor little punch list items, and some of those will be dealt with in the spring. So, um, removing some invasive plants and stuff like that, and things around the fire department equipment. Replacing mailboxes that they had to move, that kind of stuff. But, um, those are all pretty relatively minor. DPW wants the knotweed to be treated again, um, and attempts to kill it before it clogs up everything. And then, um, some maintenance items, and then you will just need the final, uh, asphalt and stuff like that, and you should be good to go. Uh, so that is, that will be an accomplishment. It always feels good to finally get this fixed after twenty, twenty-two, one more years. That's coming along. Um, the Trail Access Working Group, that's the statewide group to try to, uh, improve accessibility for trails for everyone and to improve communication about them. They're, they're coming along in, in building this, uh, recommendation report to the state. And one of the things, I've been on some group and it's like, okay, let's, how do we define these different trail, uh, interpretations, you know? Because every organization or state park or anything else has a different, um, description of trails, like, you know, easy, you know, moderate to hard and stuff like that, but there's no definition. So we've been trying to work up definitions. Other groups are working on other topics. And we had one very successful public forum in May, and we have another one coming up, um, next Monday. That's right. That wasn't yesterday. No, it's next Monday. The fifteenth. And, uh, so that's at, uh, six o'clock. And I sent you the information, but for the public, if you wanna know, um, uh, sign, get in touch with me and, um, I can give you that information. If you wanted to register and log in and, uh, hear what people have to say about trail accessibility for everyone. Because, you know, we're not all, all mountaineers, so, um, and, and, oh, it's good. It's, I mean, there've been numerous health studies that it's important for people to have access to open space. So even if it's a nice flat little stroll somewhere, you know, in the, in the city park, you know, it makes a huge difference in the quality of life and people's health overall. The Lake Wallace Cemetery Trail, uh, there was a little storm the other day, uh, knocked down a tree, but, um, it doesn't, didn't damage the trail, but it's probably sort of in hazardous position. So we gotta figure out how to get a tree company in there to take it out, 'cause our, our trail builder guy isn't really equipped. You gotta have somebody with the right equipment, so someone, someone's gonna have to go in there with a big machine or nobody's gonna have a drop on them. But, uh, other than that, it's ever so close, just like everything else. You can't click finish, get over there, just do it. And, um, the, uh, Lake Wallace Fest coming up in a month, October fourth, less than a month now. And there will be bands, there will be food trucks, there'll be, uh, all sorts of entertainment and tool. I have not been preparing, planning it, and it's like one more thing I can't immerse myself in, so I kind of just dodged it. And I'm also letting Friends of the Trail take over, and, which is what needs to be done. Because this department can't own the trail. The rec department is gonna own the trail. And it's nice that that's taking place. It's really a, a community asset and the, and the public is huge in this anyway. That's who got it started through the, uh, pub funding, uh, project we had. So, anyway, that day is coming up. It's gonna be a five K and then a one K roll and stroll. So, uh, everybody can participate and check out the trail and, um, join the festivities. October fourth, it's a Saturday, and we'll not rain on the people. Community Plan, uh, that latest project we're working on, developing the interactive website that will plug into the town's website where, you know, you can say, who's responsible for this? And they'll say DPW or Select Board or Conservation. Who's, you know, let's just go to that, and, yeah. Uh, so that's coming along, and our two interns did a lot of really good work, I'm told. Um, they're back to school. One of them, the one at Amherst College, uh, asked me about continuing to find things for him to, to work on, and I said, absolutely. Um, so, uh, he wants to keep learning more about local government. He's from Kenya, so it's a very different system of local government here. And, uh, if he plans to stay, then great. Maybe he can have my job someday. So, any, yeah, you know, so I've encouraged him. I have encouraged back them, but, uh, hopefully has, has the time to do it. A bunch of us, uh, last week met with, or two weeks ago now, are the new circuit rider for the Department of Energy Resources. You know, about the governor's big push for renewable energy and how there's now legislation that kind of, in some ways overrides the municipalities. And they're trying to tell us, no, 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 you'll still have a say. Well, anyway. Uh, that's being worked out, but they have a new circuit rider for a region and, uh, DPW Director Liz and Stephanie from Conservation and Steve Garabedian of the Conservation Commission, and John Pecara of the Energy and Sustainability Committee. We met with her and she kind of was introducing herself, and regulations aren't finalized yet, but yes, it's happening in a hurry. They want them to be final by March. Um, they're also working on a draft bylaw for towns, so we could learn how to be conforming. So once again, we might need to revise our, our solar bylaw, the battery bylaw that we just had passed. So that information's coming out, um, and, uh, you know, this person, her name is Alison Gage. She seems very earnest. Uh, she comes more from a, uh, public policy and conservation background, so, uh, she's sympathetic for towns. I think she worked for a municipality, as I recall, so, um, she's sympathetic, no, it was a Franklin, Franklin Council of Government. That's who she worked for, as a, as a big, the planner or something, yeah.
And she was raised someplace in one of the hill towns, I think.
Right, something like that, yeah. Did I miss anything?
Just that she was clear that we weren't her first stop.
Right.
And that she'd been hearing strong concern from people like us who do have good bylaws that it would undermine our, our care. And she, uh, she, uh, she seemed to be agreeing with us and, and actually, you know, she, she made me feel somewhat better because she said they would only interfere if we couldn't get through a site plan approval on special permit in the space of twelve months. There would be some, some give on continuances that couldn't be controlled either by us or by the applicants. As Steve said when we were chatting in the parking lot, the, the proof of the pudding is in the eating. And she did, she did say that she thought that it would be too fast.
Yeah, yeah, she did.
So she had sympathy for our concerns.
Yeah. And a lot of these little hill towns that are the targets, they don't have staff, they don't have professionals helping them. The regional planning commissions are trying to do what they can, but, you know, you've got fifty towns and, uh, all volunteer government. It's, it's, they're targets with lots of big parcels too, you know, and, and so they're pretty worried about that in the hills. I've been hearing from Blandford at some of the PBPC meetings. And, uh, they already have like six large solar projects and, um, they think that more will be coming, you know, because they're all on the pipe in Route twenty, so they have all the power lines they need and, um.
A lot of forest in there.
Yeah, yeah, so that's one of those. A few of us, two select board members, our cultural, uh, district manager, and I, um, went to the UMass Community Breakfast and ate heartily. Um, it was free, why not? And, uh, anyway, it was, it was just one of these things. It was also co-sponsored by the Amherst Area Chamber of Commerce, with whom we now have this very good working relationship with. And, um, so I think it was a chance to sort of continue our, building our connections with the UMass, whatever they're called, the Community Outreach Office. And, yeah, they slipped us in, said, sure, here's your tech echo. And so we did that. Parking was free in the garage. It's always nice. Usually I have to ram through the, very.
Scrubbing the car.
But only after hockey games. But, uh, anyway, yes, we're gonna keep doing more outreach on different things. For example, uh, the whole casual, um, feasibility study we're doing now, because we brought the UMass folks through casual and, um, you know, showed them around some of the sites over there. Everyone's going, wow, we can't, we didn't know all this stuff was here. Usually we just drive through Belcher Town. And well, that's the problem. So look what we have. You have to take a turn off the road once in a while. And so anyway, yeah, they, uh, did seem very enthusiastic about that, so we're just gonna keep working, working that whole thing.
What can they offer exactly?
Well, publicity, continued, you know, it's networking, it's building relationships with people. They might know somebody looking for something or you might be able to tell somebody who, hey, what about this place? Check this place out over here. You know, because they, they have a lot of, uh, well, they own the orchards in, in a demonstration forest in Belcher Town. They have an enormous number of employees who live in Belcher Town, who have certainly driven through from Palmer and Ware. And a lot of students live here. That's why we have the UMass bus making its way, well, many times a day. And, um, you know, it, it, it makes sense that there would be some interaction. You know, those Monday mornings when there's a huge number of students all down to the courthouse, that's another part of UMass coming into Belcher Town. So, uh, it, it's good for them to know that what we have, um, that there's a relationship there to have that. And if they ever do need, you know, any kind of R and D space, you know, um, that kind of stuff. If somehow they develop, you know, years ago it was mentioned, and it's not out of the question, they could develop or increase their relationship with Bay State Medical Center. Maybe you can have some program in Belcher Town, you know, easy commute for, from both. So I don't know. It's just, it's just the sort of thing you do, I, I think, to build, um, interest and opportunities. Your real estate, you know all about schmoozing. Look for those kind of.
I hope schmooze, yeah.
That's why my real estate career was very short. And, uh, anyway, yeah, so, uh, that was that. And, oh, and, and there's a special town meeting that was scheduled. It'll be October twenty seventh, six thirty PM at the high school. Just, there you go. October twenty seventh, Monday evening.
What's on the list?
Oh, just, well, a lot of, uh, some money issues. And after this year's town, annual town meeting, I think the thinking is, let's take care of some business instead of letting it all build up. So we're, we have fifty-two items. Um, so, we're, you know, we don't have time to do anything with the zoning, obviously, either. We'll leave the town meeting. More information's gonna come out, because it's usually all about money. And, um, I've asked Sarah in Conservation if there are any grants we'll need a town meeting approval for. So we'll have to scramble to get some information together. And I'm done.
You were at the EDIC meeting where they were having a meeting with Brissa and getting an update on where that project is.
Oh, yeah.
What did you learn?
That was gonna be my question.
Brissa, uh, okay, there, there's the same, the same person is leading the project, but the company has changed. The, the, the company known as Brissa does not wanna work in Massachusetts anymore. An affiliated company called Sydney Capital, which, which Hamid is, Hamid Graham's the key guy, uh, is, I think, the principal.
Did you say we got Sidney?
Sidney, like the city, like the big city. Um, and, uh, anyway, he's, he insists that he's, he's moving ahead and he's working to get his credits, but, you know, he has deadlines coming up. So Mass Development and EDIC are both saying, we gotta, we gotta think about pulling the plug on this guy and putting it back out for new proposals.
Don't start over again.
We might have to.
What, was there any indication as to why it was, uh, was not interested in working within the state?
Uh, their experience in Chickapie is sour, isn't it?
Okay.
Apparently it's a lot easier to do things in New York. I don't know.
Okay.
But, uh, so anyway, but Hamid, Hamid, because he's from the area, wants to keep going and make it happen. So that's happening, um, and, yeah, that's the essence of that. So Bill Terry has retired as Chair of the EDIC after many, many, many years. So Kirk Stevens is now the, uh, Chair.
Uh, I wanted to ask you two about, do you run, I forgot the full name of the Economic Council, the Economic Development Council?
Uh, Western Mass Economic Development Council. I, I, they had a meeting this one tomorrow.
It's the group that, um, 'cause I call, a part of one of the meetings.
Oh, the Creative Economy.
Creative Economy.
Yeah.
They're working on zoning regulations for farm stands and for small artisan sheds that might be on the sides of roads.
They are concerned about, um, restrictions that are in the signage section.
So they wanna change the zoning regulations?
Yeah, they wanna change the, the signage and, uh, they're concerned about, uh, you know, things that, you know, it's one thing to put up a farm stand, but what's a farm stand? Is it a table with some zucchini on it? Or is it something you have to pull off into and go into a building and it has a whole bunch of refrigerators and, you know? So they're, they're trying to, um, they're also trying to get a, get control over these, you know, people who have a little craft or something and put something up in their front yard that keeps expanding. and put something up in their front yard and it just keeps expanding and expanding. So gee, I make, I, I make knockoff iPhones and I can sell them from my front yard, you know? So, uh, people will stop and, and I'm doing good business. So I built a little bigger shed and then, you know, next thing you know, it just turns into a business that is taking away from some of the business and went through all the proper channels to get a physical location and committing and, yeah. So I think that's their concern. Um, the person leading that effort has spoken to Paul and me and, um, he said, well, sure, go, go see what you can find out.
So that, at some point, are they gonna coordinate that through us?
That would happen, yeah.
So they're not gonna, independent, they bring that to town meeting or something?
No, because you would still have to hold the public hearing.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, they would, but they, uh, I mean, the, the, the official procedure is any zoning change goes through the Select Board. So you apply to them, they say, send it to the planning board for a public hearing. You hold the public hearing, you vote on a recommendation. It doesn't matter which way you vote, it still goes to town meeting. But you report on what your vote was. And then the proponents will say, we need to do this because, and opponents might say, you're gonna ruin the town, and then you vote.
Um, they, they haven't really been discussing this with the agricultural commission either, have they?
Not that I am, I don't know.
Because, I mean, the farm stand is part of farming.
Yeah.
Which is in a special category. It takes it outside of their zoning controls.
Yeah.
So I don't think you, can you control that?
I don't think.
If somebody wants to have a farm stand.
If you are, if, if you are, uh, a farmer and you are selling some majority of your products and you can sell a few things from other people, um, then you really are exempt from zoning. But, um, I think they're also thinking about, you know, the home bakers or the crafters and start putting up stuff. I guess there was a.
Yeah, there's some stuff around town we could go put and build up and sell in other commodities.
Yeah, so I, I think that might have been a concern. That's what I heard anyway, but.
And what do they wanna do with signage?
Off premises sign. I didn't see it as a concern. I'm trying to remember now exactly what it was. But if, uh, you know, you have a specific activity and you want to advertise it somehow, you know, at, at the time, whatever their example was, or the thing they wanted to do, I thought, it's not a big deal, just do it.
Meaning, you know.
I don't remember what it was.
Two miles down the road is.
Yeah, something like that.
There's.
But it's also been kind of saying, you know, we applied for a grant to do a complete zoning overhaul. If we get the grant, this is gonna happen anyway, so don't, don't, you don't need to really kill yourself appropriately right now. That, you know, these things aren't huge problems and, uh, all the stuff, all the complaints we get from people about stuff. Do not involve those two, two things, so.
Uh, one more thing. I wanted to ask about what was happening with the solar bylaws up in Shrewsbury. I mean, you saw that in the paper.
Yeah.
That, uh, the company that was going to develop on Cowell's land up there dropped their lawsuit against Shrewsbury. You know, they were suing the town over having overly restrictive bylaws and their bylaws weren't that much different than ours, were they?
There were a couple of things in there that were restrictive. I think ours are not that restrictive.
And it was also a different attorney, I mean, it was Governor Healy, who was Attorney General when ours were okay, right?
Yeah.
And it, it's the new person who.
Well, yeah, it's that, but it's also the new state stuff that's coming down and they're trying to coordinate. Anyway, this, yes, this company pulled out and dropped the suit and so for now, Shrewsbury's bylaw stands.
So ours would stand too, probably.
At this point, yeah.
At this point.
Yeah.
Now, was there any speculation that they pulled out because of this, you know, issue coming down from the state where the state is gonna be taking over the permitting?
That wasn't mentioned.
Figure, well, why have this big, you know, drawn out expensive fight with Shrewsbury? We'll just go and do it with the state and we can go right around the regulations and.
There's a possibility, I don't know. Hasn't been mentioned. But they're probably clever enough to think about this now.
I was imagining that maybe Coles is gonna sell some more land.
Well, there was something in the newspaper that I thought was interesting, a little blur as you read down towards the bottom. The company said that it wasn't economical to build these things anymore with the cost of land, the cost of equipment and, uh, the cost of the connections to the grid.
Yeah.
That they're, and, and then take away the state incentives, which are collapsing. And the federal incentives, incentives, which are collapsing, that it wasn't economical to build these things at all. So where does that lead, you know, the, the solar development that the state wants to take care of? It doesn't sound like it's going anywhere right now.
Not right now, no, probably not.
So the pressure on us to have the field do projects is probably gonna fold up too.
But we haven't had anything in six years.
Yeah, it's been a while. Okay, I'm sorry. Did, did anybody else have anything to ask for?
No, I was gonna ask you about Brissa. Does, 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 is your gut feeling that if the EDIC pulls the plug, that it'll, our, Hush, Hushon, is that his name? That the guy who is from the area who's.
Hamid.
Um, it, is, has, is there a hope that he'll be able to do it without Brissa?
Oh, yeah, he, he seems quite clear that he can do it without Brissa. I mean, that was just a corporate entity, I guess. Um, and he's still affiliated with them. And Sydney Capital is affiliated with them. They're just kind of, you know, these corporate collections. And so they do things like that and stuff around and people and entities and.
Well, given how far it went in, in permitting, I don't think it would pay the EDIC to take a beat and see how it goes.
Well, yeah. Uh, you know, the, the guy's invested how much already? I mean, just going through all his plans and everything else, a few hundred thousand, I would say at least. And, um, so I don't think they wanted to just leave that behind.
It'd be interesting to know something about this new developer coming in. I mean, uh, what kind of strength do they actually have? And they were able to just measure Brissa and say, well, you know, where's your balance sheet? Let's look at, you know, your investors, how, you know, how deep are your pockets? You bring a new investor in, it's like, well, who, who are these people?
Well, that's it. And, and Hamid is, is still the key person. Um, and it's, I think, a lot of the same people in both corporations. But.
They're just shedding the Brissa skin.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. That's the impression I get.
Sort of reorganize, reorganize a bit.
It's similar but different, you know, and, um, and so what I think they're doing and, and act well, what the EDIC and Mass Development are doing is saying, you gotta demonstrate to us that you can do this. We don't, we have to move on. And it's, gee, we're sorry if you spent a lot of money and nothing happens, but, you know, we need to do what we need to do. So, uh, I, yeah, I don't think they're, you know, giving this, you know, doing their diligence.
Okay, thank you. I could also, I wonder if you have anything you'd like to show at the board now? The owner now says, shaking his head, fine, cool, this is fine, shaking his head, and that's good.
I, I don't know.
Um, I think that's, I already asked the, the things I was curious about that were in Mr. Doug's report, so I don't know. You know, it's, uh, so we've only one hour and, uh, we can wrap the meeting up. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Second and, and any further discussion on it. Motion to adjourn. I'll move right to a vote on the favor of my, my, the Director Shell five zero zero adjourn. Turn it off from earlier.